Corporal Kevin, no order. It is Monday, February the 27th, 2023, it's nine o'clock in the morning, and the Kirk County Commissioners Court is now in session. If you would please ask with prayer and pledge.
I pray that you guide us always, satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting. Please guide us through the transition our county and country are going through, as we know you have a plan for us all. Lord, please guide us so that this meeting can be productive, let us be effective and decisive. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed. I want to remind everyone to turn your phones off, or at least to vibrate, if it doesn't work when we're proceeding. The next item we have on the agenda is the public input. This is our opportunity for the court to listen to the public. We ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. We have one, George, I think you wanted to speak with this.
Yes. George Buridi, 1616 Glen Road, do we do that here? Anyways, I'm back to ask you to consider something that I asked a few months ago, which is, I see a letter to the editor where you guys are being challenged to find the funding for these bond issues that didn't pass. Well, the one in particular, the Hagbarn, is sort of earmarked, written for, an application to EIC. And I would highly recommend, encourage you to consider taking that presentation that the bond committee was running around town, and take it right over to EIC and apply for the funds there. It's a allowable project for EIC. One of the city council members was on your committee, therefore I think you might get a little bit of help in selling it to the city, even though you guys have apparently a current tense relationship, I'd say, but that, doesn't matter, it's playing that way in public. So anyways, the point is that one of the city council members was on your committee announcing this as a need. EIC funds are not taxpayer funds, they're coming from sales tax, therefore, a thing like the Hagbarn would essentially pay for itself through whatever revenue people claim that it's going to bring. So, I would suggest, I would highly encourage you to push that through before EIC spends the, currently it's about $6 million, I think, that they're sitting on, unmarked for anything. And they're not doing a whole lot of economic development anyways, so, please apply that so that we can have that be considered as a citizen help. And then one last thing, ah, forget it, that's good. Thanks.
Any other public comment? Very well, then we'll move on to commissioners' comments, we'll start with precinct one.
We've got a little rain yesterday out in our place up in the valley, now you can't tell. So, so we've got a lot of, a lot of people out there on the ground, so be careful.
Precinct two?
Yeah, we do have a burn ban in effect for precinct two. We got some mist yesterday in the mountain, and it's already all dried out, so, again, yes, be careful. Just have received a lot of complaints about the poor road conditions in Center Point associated with the sewer project, and I'm hoping in frame that Hayward, the subcontractor for P Guerrero, is out there working today, that's what we were assured that they would be, so.
Hey?
Hey, I'm sorry, yeah, hey, yeah. And their focus is on Stone Lee, so for all those people who frequent Stone Lee and have been complaining, I'm hoping that that gets addressed quickly, I believe we'll talk about it a little bit later in the agenda. The other thing, I keep getting all kinds of complaints about trash along our highways, in particular Highway 27. So I encourage the public to not use that garbage bin in the back of your pickup truck, it doesn't work. If you throw something back there, it blows out as you're going down the highway. I've talked with our council bull and people in the environmental group, and hey, we need to tighten up on fines and enforce our liver laws, so, encourage you to keep an eye out for them, that's all.
Precinct three?
Nothing.
Four?
I was gone all last week to a conference in College Station, and missed several things, you know, the library board meeting, which I knew I wasn't going to be there, but also the big wreck or spillage, fuel spillage on I-10 out there, they rerouted a lot of traffic right through Ingram and what have you. I know Reagan give us, will probably give an update or what he knows about it. It was actually in Gillespie County, it's, so it's not under our jurisdiction, but he'll fill us in a little bit more, and department head comments, so that's all I got.
Okay. Very well, then let's move on to the consideration agenda. First item on the agenda is 1.1, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve a resolution honoring Charlie Witt.
Yes, sir.
It is truly an honor for me to be able to read this resolution, I've known you for, what, about thirty years?
Yes.
And, so I'm going to just start with the resolution. This is the resolution of the Kirk County Commissioners Court congratulating Kirk County Sheriff's Corporal Other Charlie Witt on his retirement after twenty-two years and four months of law enforcement and community service to Kirk County. Whereas Corporal Witt has served as citizen of Kirk County for twenty-two years and four months, and has announced his plans to honorably retire on March the 3rd, 2023. Whereas he has earned 5,351 higher education and T-Cole hours, as well as a Texas Commission of Law Enforcement Masterpiece Officer license. Whereas he has served as dispatcher, corrections officer, patrol deputy, assistant jail administrator, court security officer, warrants division deputy, and warrants division corporal. Whereas he has demonstrated his effectiveness by maintaining up-to-date knowledge of county, state, and federal laws. Whereas he has been recognized by the Kirk County Sheriff's Office as Deputy of the Year, and has been awarded commendations for his service, as well as receiving numerous letters of appreciation from citizens, coworkers, and other law enforcement agencies for outstanding service. And whereas in February of 2012, Corporal Witt was awarded the Sheriff's Life Saving Award for responding to the first floor of the courthouse, Kirk County courthouse regarding a medical emergency. After determining the female victim was not breathing and had no pulse, began life-saving CPR efforts with another citizen. Due to Corporal Witt's effort, the victim responded and began to breathe. The victim was transported to the hospital and survived the medical emergency. Therefore, be it resolved that on this day, February the 27th, 2023, Kirk County Commissioners Court has hereby thanked and congratulate Corporal Other Charlie Witt for his service to the citizens of Kirk County and the state of Texas, and wish him and his family the very best in retirement. Now let me say, for any of you that might not know Charlie Witt, this is an honorable man.
Amen.
Charlie, why don't you sit down here with me? Hand you this, and I should give you that. So, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Charlie, I love you.
Thank you all, love you.
Thank you for your service.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to sign this and give it to us.
Thank you all.
Charlie, you ought to stand at the podium just for a second, so they can see everybody watching YouTube, to see who's bragging about it.
They couldn't see what you're saying, they could not see you.
I'm on the podium, my friend.
Seriously, just stand there for a second, just wave or something.
It's me. I think I know most everybody. I think I think I know most everybody. Thank you all.
Next is item 1.2, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to recognize Julie Leonard for years in service on the Kirk County Historical Commission.
Do we have to accept that?
Oh yeah, we need to take a vote on it. Vote in favor of the resolution, Charlie?
I just need a motion, one second.
Oh, a second one?
Who made the motion?
I make the motion. Everybody in favor, say aye. Aye. You have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You go ahead and stand.
I know.
Get behind the podium so the public can see.
I'm embarrassed to follow Charlie Witt.
We have a plaque, in appreciation to Julie Leonard with our sincere gratitude for your outstanding service for so many years. How many years has it been?
Fifteen as chair, but probably seventeen.
Right.
I got captured for a minute on that in Kirk County.
For services so many years on the Kirk County Historical Commission, and your dedication to documenting the history of Kirk County. Is this part of it, Judge?
Yeah. The resolution?
Yeah, that's it.
I know this plaque is small token, but thank you very much for everything you've done for Kirk County.
Well, thank you. Sit right here, right here. There we go, thank you. And thanks for all my support here, all the Kirk County people, the historical people coming up. All they're doing.
Yes.
Really, you know, we're going toward your contributions at Center Point, with the short presentation. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution, the plaque honoring Julie Leonard for years in service at the Kirk County Historical Commission. Got a motion and a second, if the favor say aye? Aye. You have it. 1.3, consider to discuss and take appropriate action to approve proclamation commemorating American Red Cross Month, March 2023. Ms. Robbins?
I'm Debbie Zabik, I'm the exec director, so.
Okay. This is traditionally Red Cross Month?
March, yes, yes it is.
Okay. Then I make a motion that we recognize this as commemorated as Red Cross Month. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor say aye? Any others?
Who made the, um, sorry?
I make the motion.
Who made the second?
Charlie.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to fast forward to item 1.19, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve an update on making cell phone providers, Sheriff.
Okay, thanks, thanks for having me, Judge, this is going to be, make it real quick, I really, just kind of notifying y'all, this kind of refers to me and Bruce, I have my phones, Bruce has his county phones. What we're wanting to do is, we're wanting to switch to AT&amp;T FirstNet, currently we're with West Central Wireless, and they've been sold out to Verizon. The whole time, we really haven't had good phone service, and like I said, I think because they're winding down, they've already closed Fredericksburg office, and they'll be closing this one soon. But I met with AT&amp;T, our rep, they've really offered us a really good deal at this time, basically, if y'all know, AT&amp;T has commercial service, and then they've got first responder service, which we'd be on, and then in case of a storm or something like that, you can get uplifted for forty-eight hours at a time, you know. Think this is a really good time to do this, kind of go over some numbers with y'all, especially with the eclipse coming up, the small one, what I call the bigger one. But it's really, I thought I said, a no-brainer on this one. Basically, right now with me, I owe about $4,000 with West Central Texas Wireless for equipment, and basically, if we go with AT&amp;T, it's agreement, it's, you know, not really a contract, it's a agreement, we sign up, and then basically, they provide the phone, it's no eighteen months, twenty-four months, and what happens, if you depart, it doesn't work out, you hand back the phone. It's not like where I'm in right now, where I owe $4,000 still on equipment, they got me on a three-year contract. The good thing with that, how am I going to pay for that? It is a thirty percent increase that will have to go in my next budget, you know, but what do you get for that thirty percent? One thing, they'll change your phones out for free, I don't know what people think, but for eighteen, every eighteen months, they'll change the phones out. Then we get, like I said, we can get the cattle, which is, you know, what we'll probably need during the eclipse, which is a cell on wheels, but like I said, we just can give back the phone, but we get a $200 credit, so how am I going to pay for this per line? I personally, I have thirty-eight lines at the sheriff's office, seventy-two hundred bucks. So, you know, it takes two months, you have to have service for two months, then the $200 kicks in per phone, it's going to, in the long run, it'll be a wash, $4,000 will be paid for that, and then I'll have several months worth of credit, you know, but I will have to up my budget next year's line item, you know. With that, I'll answer any questions, like I said, it's, I hate to say no string attached, I know you don't like that, but I've really checked into it, and I think it's a good deal. And then, it's also Bruce, you know, I don't know his particular numbers, but, you know, I know what I owe with this time with equipment.
Bruce?
Yes, sir. Is this something we, since I didn't realize, West Coast Wireless had changed hands, is this something we need to look at? Absolutely. With the rest of the county? Yes. And realistically, I feel that their level of service has gone down substantially, and if you leave the county or their coverage area and try to come back, your phone won't register, or if we're out, it won't roam, so, we've had these issues. It's just. What's our current agreement with, with West Coast Wireless? Yeah, we, we would have to pay off the equipment we have, which the $200 per line will do, same as the sheriff. That'll be a budget item for use, or? Ultimately, for next year, it will be, yes. This year, I think it'll wash out pretty close to even. I mean, what are you going to, are you going to bring it to the court next meeting or something to do this, or?
We're both on the agenda for right now, they just listed my name, so we're both on it, that's why, and just to, just to kind of update y'all, you know how salesmen are, right? They're going to offer us the latest, greatest, you know, at no charge, which is usually $178, you know, kind of making the pot sweeter. But that's why I brought it before y'all, I don't really know where we go from here, I mean, basically, it's kind of an agreement, and, you know, we can sign it anytime they're ready to go, you know.
County attorney, they say it's an agreement, not a contract, is it, do you need to look at?
I haven't seen the agreement with them for service yet, but I'm sure that Larry will get it to me once he gets in.
Yes, ma'am.
Just curious, anybody consider Pure Talk?
Doesn't work here.
Sorry?
You don't, the cell towers here are predominantly AT&amp;T and West Central Wireless.
Yeah, I mean, if you're advertising, and you get the same stuff.
Bruce, I've had it for two years, and it works great, I didn't notice it single. But I've had it for months now, about six or eight months, and it's fine, and works good going in and out. The main thing that, yeah, the main thing that we found with the AT&amp;T is it is geared for law enforcement, there's a special band that you get that nobody else will get, and that's part of the whole thing. I will say this, the negative with Pure Talk is the same as AT&amp;T. I go to hunt, I have no service, and I didn't with AT&amp;T either.
It's the same tower?
It's exactly the same tower, so it wouldn't be good for law enforcement at all, whereas I went out there, I can put my county phone, I'd get service.
Well, I've got AT&amp;T FirstNet, it still doesn't work very well.
Nothing works at Center Point.
Well, and let me, let me, let me add to that, I should have done this, there's a new tower that's a year old in Garvin Store, and on May 24th, the new tower on Holdsworth for AT&amp;T will be up, I think that's going to answer a lot of, or fix a lot of our problems, May 24th.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is there a motion? Do we need to?
I don't need to do anything, good. Well, I think the county attorney needs to bring it up first.
I think this was just an update today.
Okay, permission? Very good, thank you.
All right, thanks, Judge.
Okay, back to the regular agenda, item 1.4, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve a resolution authorizing the creation of a law enforcement agency in Kirk County Attorney's Office, and authorize Kirk County Attorney to submit law enforcement agency application to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Ms. Evans?
Yes, sir. At the last budget, y'all approved an investigator position, and we've hired Nick Krupa, who's here with me today. At this time, his commission is being held by, he's back here, being held by Gillespie County Attorney's Office, and the Kirk County Attorney's Office has not had an investigator position or been a law enforcement agency in over twenty years, in fact, Rusty Herholtzer was the last investigator for the Kirk County Attorney's Office. So, at this time, I ask the court to approve the resolution authorizing me to submit the application to T-Cole, and authorizing the creation of a new law enforcement agency.
I move that we create a law enforcement agency within the Kirk County Attorney's Office and authorize the Kirk County Attorney to submit the law enforcement agency application to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor say aye? Aye. Close? Any others?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1.5, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve a resolution in support of the Rock Department's Development. Matt Gillum. Well, not bad. If you would just defend it by yourself.
Hi, I'm April Inkstrom, not Matt Gillum, but he is here with me today, and I think that he's the one who's spoken with you, presented in front of you guys, it would have been in 2020 and then in 2021, so I'm sorry we didn't visit last year, but we're here before you again today. Just to back up real quick, I'm the Director of Development in Texas, so I oversee all of our Texas development, you know, through construction and stabilization, and first, I wanted to talk a little bit about Overland Property Group, and then we can talk about the specifics of this deal. So, Overland Property Group started in Salina, Kansas, it was twenty years ago, just towards the end of last year. Salina, Kansas is about a town of fifty thousand people, so we're Matt's from, our other managing partner, Pat Beatty's from Salina, I lived there for seven years. You know, and from Salina, and working in Kansas, we branched out, you know, to other states in the Midwest, as well as Colorado and Texas. We can move to the next slide. You can go to the next one. You know, a little bit about us, we really, it's our business model to develop our communities, and then to continue to own and operate them, so we don't develop to sell, we develop to, you know, own and manage these communities, and we oversee everything ourselves. The only third parties that we work with are GCs, who we've worked with also for about twenty years, and then we also have an asset management division that works with a third-party property manager, but, but we really are hands-on developers. When I started four years ago, I think there were only four of us employees, and then a couple managing partners, we've since grown to closer to seventeen employees, point being that we run a small shop, so we're like, you know, we like to work in these smaller communities, because that's what we're familiar with, those are the communities that we know, that we feel familiar with, and we understand the need as well. We can go to the next slide. We've won a few awards for our work, we're quite proud of, yeah, I think those speak for themselves, I'll list them off, we can go to the next one. And the next one. I just wanted to give a little overview of our properties, as well as the two developments that we spoke to you previously about. You know, both of those, we were successful, obviously, in winning tax credits from the state agency, and those tax credits, you know, allow us to develop high-quality but affordable housing for those making anywhere between thirty and sixty percent of the area median income. So it's a really neat program, you know, enacted by Reagan in the eighties, very bipartisan, seems to be something that everyone can agree on, you know, we all want people to be able to afford to live in the cities that they work in, to afford to live in the cities that they were born and raised in, or get to live there. So, our first development that we were awarded funding for is the Residents at Ridge Hill, that's forty-three units of senior affordable housing. Matt and I actually drove the site before we came here this morning, and there's, you know, the nice hardy board siding is on now, it's really moving along nicely, and on, and on schedule. And then the second development we spoke to you about in 2021 is the Reserves at Holdsworth, and that's thirty-six units of multifamily, and right now, this is, what you can see here on the screen is a view from the site. When I first checked out the site after it being cleared, I, I was really excited to be able to provide views like these for people on more restricted incomes, they're million-dollar views, it feels good to be able, you know, put housing in a place that makes sense for people, and that feels, you know, special, and something that they can be proud of. We want these communities to be a place where people feel happy to be spending their time. So, before we move on to the next slide, just real quick, the Residents at Ridge Hill, we're looking to open, it's on track to open this summer, and then the Reserves at Holdsworth would be opening, you know, towards the end of the year, closer to October or November. We can go to the next slide. The only third parties that we work with are GCS, who we've worked with also for about 20 years. And then we also have an asset management division that works with a third-party property manager. But, but we really are hands-on developers. When I started four years ago, I think there were only four of us employees and then a couple managing partners. We've since grown to closer to 17 employees. Point being that we run a small shop. So we're like, you know, we like to work in these smaller communities because that's what we're familiar with. Those are the communities that we know, that we feel familiar with. And we understand the need as well. We can go to the next slide. Oh, we've won a few awards for our work that we're quite proud of. Yeah, I think those speak for themselves. I don't list them off. We can go to the next one. And the next one. I just wanted to give a little overview of our properties, as well as the two developments that we spoke to you previously about. You know, both of those, we were successful, obviously, in winning tax credits from the state agency. And those tax credits, you know, allow us to develop high-quality but affordable housing for those making anywhere between 30 and 60% of the area median income. So it's a really neat program, you know, enacted by Reagan in the 80s, very bipartisan, seems to be something that everyone can agree on. You know, we all want people to be able to afford to live in the cities that they work in, to afford to live in the cities that they were born and raised in, or get to live there. So our first development that we were awarded funding for is the Residents at Ridge Hill. That's 43 units of senior affordable housing. Matt and I actually drove the site before we came here this morning. And there's, you know, the nice hardy board siding is on now. It's really moving along nicely and on, and on schedule. And then the second development we spoke to you about in 2021 is the Reserves at Holdsworth, and that's 36 units of multifamily. And right now, this is a, what you can see here on the screen is a view from the site. When I first checked out the site after it being cleared, I, I was really excited to be able to provide views like these for people on more restricted incomes. They're million-dollar views. It feels good to be able, you know, put housing in a place that makes sense for people and that feels, you know, special and something that they can be proud of. We want these communities to be a place where people feel happy to be spending their time. So before we move on to the next slide, just real quick, the Residents at Ridge Hill, we're looking to open. It's on track to open this summer. And then the Reserves at Holdsworth would be opening, you know, towards the end of the year, closer to October or November. We can go to the next slide. And then I just wanted to run through a couple of examples of our previous properties as well. This is the Reserves at Steamboat Springs. This was our first development there, and we're currently working on our third development in Steamboat. We can go to the next. This is Lee Loffs, where Lee Jeans was started, in our hometown of Salina, Kansas. We're actually office out of that first floor. After knowing that the historical commission is here, I would like to meet you guys. One of these days, I'll have to stop by and chat with you because I love these historic rehabs so much. And that's a personal passion of mine. So this one was really cool to see come to fruition. Go to the next one. And then here's our second Steamboat Springs development, Alpenglow Village. That's multifamily. It was completed in 2019. Go to the next. And then here's the Reserves at Preston Trails in Wolfworth. Just a little example of our, you know, clubroom space that we have, you know, built into all of our developments. We find that it's a really great place for our community members to kind of get to know one another, get to know their neighbors. These are popular amenities. Go to the next slide. And then here, just a few more photos of our interiors throughout Texas. We can go to the next. And just a couple more. We can go to the next slide. All right, about this development, it's located at 301 Mappuson North. And it does straddle the city and county. It's an interesting site for that reason. Go to the next slide. So you can see here, we have only 18 and a half acres to work with. But we would, we would be working largely within that already zoned portion of the city's land. We can move to the next slide. We're currently looking at developing anywhere between 25 and 35 units of affordable senior living. As you know, Kerrville has some topography, so we're working with our engineers to figure out what makes the most sense, you know, to fit the building in its landscape as best we possibly can. But this is what we're currently looking at. You know, when, when there's a countrywide shortage of affordable housing, you have to chip away bit by bit. And as you know, we first spoke to you in 2020, it's 2023 now. And we're just completing the first community. These things take a lot of time. So it's, you know, sometimes the unit counts seem low, but we feel like it's important to keep chipping away, you know, as best we can. Kerrville has continued to show a lot of demand for affordable housing, both in senior and multifamily. And, you know, I just, just last week, we received four calls about the Residents at Ridge Hill asking when it would be available to lease. So we still, we're just seeing a lot of demand and anticipate that the two communities we're already developing will lease up very quickly. So we're, we feel confident that this would be the same case. Go to the next slide. So this is, this would be an affordable community. So like I mentioned, we would have units available, available for people making between 30 and 60% of the area median income. We're still working on it. We may or may not have submarket rate units included. We can go to the next slide. Development amenities, you know, we, we like to make these places communities and not just apartment buildings. So we really want them to be places where people feel at home, like a place where they want to spend their time. So like I mentioned, we have fully amenitized clubhouses. We have, you know, perimeter fencing. Oftentimes, we'll have dog parks, community gardens. We want to make it a place where you want to be, essentially. Go to the next one. And then our unit amenities, I think, are always really important to talk about because people who are unfamiliar often hear affordable housing and they think it'll be cheap or not well-constructed. But like I said, we don't develop and sell. You know, it's our goal, our hope, our intent to own these buildings for the next 35-plus years. So if for no other reason than that, and then also looking out for, you know, the people who call our communities homes, these places are built to a really high standard. The Affordable Program, you know, the way the funding works, it allows us to build high-quality developments while still charging affordable rents, which I think is something, you know, really, really cool and special about the program. So, you know, we have naughty Adlerwood cabinets. We have luxury vinyl tile flooring, a lot of high ceilings. There's nothing that differs about these communities from a market rate development. We can go to the next one. I think that might be it. Does anyone have any questions for me? I will say, sorry, I forgot to mention it. So applications are due March 1st. So today, my ask to the commission is for a resolution of support, which would allow us to move forward with our application for funding.
This development, you said it's senior?
It is, yes, yep.
Do you plan to do any other multifamily?
Oh, I sure hope so. I know I've talked with the city about this as well. Unfortunately, sometimes we are constrained to what scores with the state. But we have worked in Kerrville now. You know, I think Steamboat Springs is the only other place. Steamboat Springs and Canyon Lake, Texas, we've done two developments. I think this would be our first city to do three. So, you know, at this point, we feel like we know the city well. We know the market. Our construction team certainly knows what they're working with. Same thing with our asset management department. They have a good understanding of the demand and the market. Point being, you know, that I'd love to come back and do like a 4% bond deal multifamily. That's something I want to look at. Of course, I can never make new promises, but that's something we're certainly interested in. And when you do a bond deal, you have less scoring parameters. You're able to build more units. So this year, senior was what scored and could be competitive from a 9% perspective. But we certainly understand the need and desire for multifamily.
Well, thank you. Can you explain why you need the resolution?
Yeah, no, so we can secure funding, essentially. It's a really competitive points-based, scoring-based process. And you need, you need the county and city's support in order to submit your application and receive that funding.
So you get, I guess, to explain the program to the public, why would we do this?
Yeah, of course, of course. So the tax credit program, Section 42, I think it's maybe 1986, but don't quote me on that, was a Reagan enacted program where the federal government allocates tax credit funding to the states, and then the states decide and determine how they want to allocate that limited pool of funding that they've been given. And so it, because of that, it ends up being a very competitive process. So then, you know, developers compete through the application process for these tax credits. We submit the application, it's March 1, July 27th, at the Capitol, TDHCA Board meeting, we find out if we were awarded these tax credits. And then we're able to sell the tax credits to investors. And the proceeds from that sale are what fund 70% of the development. And then because we can take out a lower amount of debt, we can charge affordable rents. Yeah, and it stays affordable for a 35-year period. And it will always be at those income tiers, the 30, 50, 60% income tiers. So you're not going to have a situation where, you know, a few years from now, we decide we want to go crazy with the rents. It's impossible. We wouldn't do that anyway. But it's a, it's a really neat program.
You mentioned two other apartments, I guess?
Yeah.
Developments that you have here in Kerrville. Are they sold out?
Uh, no, they haven't been yet, just because it's a little bit premature. But our, our leasing contact list is quite, quite long. We're getting, like I mentioned, you know, weekly calls on, on asking when it's going to be open.
All right, I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion and second to approve the resolution for the River Rock Apartment Development. Any comments?
Yes. Just to, so the people know that this isn't, they're not adding to the county tax thing.
Correct.
The federal funds.
Exactly.
Federal passing funds.
Well, and allow me to say, thank you very much for coming to Kerr County, coming to Kerrville to help with this problem. I serve on the Affordable Housing Committee for the Chamber. And I will tell you that the most huge challenge we have in Kerrville right now is affordable housing. And so you are meeting a very important need for this community.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just that wherever there's, this is the beauty of America. Wherever there's an opportunity, where there's a need, somebody's going to figure out a way to do it. The plan you just described is not self-evident. Somebody sat in and thought it through, figured it out, researched it. You have boots on the ground, you got it done. That's the beauty of America, right there, what you just described. And the fact that we don't have to pay anything for this, it's all the local.
Well, to supplement, the city's actually putting together a public corporation as we speak to provide affordable housing with public tax dollars that the city is using to do this. This is being done privately. This is my preferred method of affordable housing financing, as we have it that privately.
Yeah.
So I'm very pleased about your...
Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
So those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nann.
Thank you. Thank you. We really love working in Kerrville, so I appreciate it.
We appreciate you. Next item on the agenda is 1.6. It's an announcement of the Upper Guadalupe River Water Resources Preservation Grant Program. Just push it up.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you for the chance to speak with y'all today about our new program that we're announcing. I wanted to introduce Shelby Tabor. She's our Natural Resources Manager at UGRA, and she's going to be a point of contact for this program. I do have some slides, but we can get them up in a minute. So this is a program that, within our Board of Directors, our Watershed Stewardship Committee wanted to find a way that we could have a role in incentivizing low-impact development practices in the community. So we can go to the next one. These, as a way to reduce storm water pollution from runoff. Next slide. So low-impact development is an approach to planning and engineering that manages storm water. You know, cities have grown over the years. We outgrow the traditional conveyance system. A rain hits the roof, goes into the, the downspout, out into the gutter, along the side of the road, into the storm drain, into our creeks and streams. And as communities grow and you have more runoff, that can exacerbate pollution in your rivers and streams and also really intensify those flash flood peaks that we already are prone to naturally in our area. And the design is really to have runoff be held as close to where the rain falls as possible and having those properties function to absorb water that then can be a source in the future as well. Examples are bio-retention, things like rain gardens and vegetative swales, also filter strips and rainwater collection, and then pervious surfaces like pervious pavers. Next slide. So again, those benefits are to treat runoff as close to where rain falls as possible. And some of the primary pollutants that can be mitigated through these practices are total suspended solids, which is sediment, which can lead to cloudiness in your rivers and streams, and also bacteria. And again, these examples in the community can just serve as education resources. Someone might look at a parking lot that has a runoff retention area, a vegetative strip, and think, oh, maybe that's something I can implement in my home or in my business as well. So we wanted to just create kind of the expectation and additional examples in the community about how these places can be built. Next slide. So our program will provide monetary rebates for design and construction of these storm water best management practices that are to reduce and infiltrate and delay storm water runoff. They're open to new construction or retrofit of existing properties. And the practices would need to follow the design and construction of some technical design guidance that we are providing with the program. They would be scored against a rubric so that we would make sure that they would meet the goals of our program. And those rebate funds will be paid after completion of the project and when a commitment to O&amp;M has been made. Because sometimes these are not your normal landscaping or your normal building practices, and they aren't necessarily going to be more onerous to maintain, but just different. And so we want to see that there's a commitment and understanding to know how to maintain a rain garden over time. Next slide. In order to be eligible, a project must be located in Kerr County. Any type of entity, public or private, is eligible, but we're not going to be funding projects at a single-family home. And they would need to be more than $20,000 of the rebate amount. So if someone wanted to put in one small rainwater catchment system, for example, we actually do have some great programs to incentivize rainwater catchment, but that's not this one. Next. Yes, thank you. So this is what these best management practices, these lid or nature-based infrastructure practices look like. You might have in your parking lot, the drainage naturally goes to a certain corner. So then you have curb cuts in that section. And then the runoff would go into a landscaped area that has layered with different infiltration materials, gravel, mulch, compost, and plants. And that runoff will soak down in there instead of, say, going into a, into a culvert into the storm drain system. And then permeable parking spots are somewhat less durable than our traditional parking spaces. So maybe you might not have your entire parking lot with these, but some of your lower, less-used ones further from the building could be made to infiltrate the rainfall that comes onto them. And rainwater harvesting, we have a lot of great examples in the community, including over at the Youth Event Center of rainwater harvesting. And filter strips are areas within a parking lot that just provide additional infiltration areas. So you might be sacrificing a few parking spaces in order to install these types of practices, but definitely benefits to reduce runoff into water quality. Next. It was also the goal of the committee to incentivize a way to protect riparian areas for properties that were along a river or creek. And these are a little bit different concept than those structural practices that I just mentioned. And so they are going to be scored a bit differently for this program. I really see as a streamside property might be doing several of those other practices, but also rainwater, but also riparian preservation because it isn't necessarily something that costs money to get the rebate for. But those projects would definitely be scored higher if they had riparian preservation as part of them. And so what we're looking for is a 30-foot buffer from the water's edge that is about 85% of that total streamside area. So if your property had 100 feet of waterside, of streamside, bordering a waterway, 85 of that would be within the buffer. And then you might have 15 feet that you are using as a targeted access point, like it's shown in that picture on the right, where you have an access point into the waterway. Next slide. So our selection process, we're going to accept applications year-round, and they will include a narrative of the project. I will say that we are asking for a lot of information for these applications. And normally, these projects are going to be working with professional design teams. So we see this as something that they'll be able to achieve within the, within the professionals that they have assembled already for these types of projects. Also include a technical drawing and a treatment worksheet, just that shows calculations of how the runoff is going to be reduced by having these practices installed. Again, we're using a rubric to score them, and there must be a minimum score in order to be eligible. Next slide. We have all of this material, the application, the guidelines, examples, as well as that rubric and the treatment worksheet on our website. And Shelby is the point of contact for the program, and her information is also on the website. And we have, we've made a flyer, JD, if we could share them with you, that summarizes the program and directs people to these resources online. And I'd love to share them with your department. If it's okay, I'll drop some off with Charlie Hastings. So when he is talking with developers, maybe during preliminary conversations, if you can just share the flyer with them. And that just directs them to UGRA for additional information. So thank you again for the opportunity to share this program with you and with the community. And if you know of a project that's eligible, please just send them our way. We're happy to answer any questions.
Got a question, Tara?
Yes, sir.
What sort of incentive programs do you have for rainwater harvesting for individual residences?
We have a 500, up to a $500 rebate. So it's 50% of the amount that's spent on the equipment, up to $500. And you can be eligible for it once per calendar year. So if you do a tank in one year, you could get the rebate. And then, say, you add to your system, and the next year, you could get an additional rebate.
Hey, possibility of getting something bigger, particularly. I would like to encourage new developers, or developers with new developments, to consider, and perhaps on a voluntary program, but bringing a new development, if we can encourage rainwater harvesting.
At the individual residence level.
That would be very beneficial.
I certainly understand that. For years, we had a large rainwater system incentive program that was up to $5,000. We really, you know, since UGRA is funded by taxpayer dollars, we, our goal is to have our projects to also be demonstration to the community. And it was tough for us to find, with putting those systems in at, you know, private residents, for them to also have that demonstration aspect. And so we do also have a grant program that is for public entities and also businesses that can be up to $15,000 for rainwater catchment, but not for individual homeowners any longer.
Would like the homeowners association.
I suppose we could look at it, yes, if it's a, those that might be eligible, if it was like a clubhouse, for example. I think we'll have to look. I think that one could be eligible, I guess.
Here's something that we work well, like our builders.
I shared a flyer with them, yeah. I was, it was serendipitous. I agree.
Well, thank you very much. You're always welcome. We're very proud of our partnership with UGRA, and you're welcome anytime.
Thank you very much. I agree. Have a great day.
Next item on the agenda is 1.7. Consider discussing appropriate action to set donations totaling $585 for the month of January 24th. Be asked to operate on this one, item 10-2-330, Reagan Gettys.
Yeah, good morning. In your backup, you'll see the particular donations for January. One in particular, I just wanted to recognize, was one was made in the memory of Mr. John Kissick. And we appreciate it.
Thank you. Will we accept the donations?
Got a motion and a second to approve accepting the donations as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Announced. Item 1.8. Consider discussing appropriate action to transfer the equipment from Corporal Precinct 4 to Road Bridge Park. That's all right.
Morning. As you know, and you may not know, I got a new truck.
Well, we were supposed to.
To your progress.
Yeah, well, anyway. And removing items from the old truck to be placed on the new truck, you know, went from Dodge to Chevrolet. But there's a headache rack, there's a toolbox, there's a directional bar, and the control for that directional bar. I ask around other county entities and Road and Bridge, like, almost remotely apart. So we just want to transfer that to them, and they can use it.
I'm looking for approval. Second. Got a motion and a second to approve transferring the equipment from Precinct 4 to Road Bridge. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Announced.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1.9. Consider discussing appropriate action to select engineering service providers to complete project implementation for engineering services pertaining to Veterans Pathway Sidewalk Project, the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funding. Ms. Button.
The Selection Review Committee met on the 22nd. All members were attending, and we reviewed and scored the requests for qualifications that we had received. We received five of them. And we would like to come forth with a recommendation of Mendez Engineering, and they are located in San Antonio, Texas. Can I answer any questions if you have any specifics?
Now, I know that we accept the recommendation to award contract for engineering services to Mendez Engineering. I'll say that then. Got a second? Motion and a second? Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Announced.
So we checked with this company at all?
I'm sorry?
Did y'all do the references?
They submitted.
Oh, it's all bad.
References with their package.
Yes, they had letters of recommendation, primarily for this particular one from the city of San Antonio. They've done some extensive work in sidewalks, which is basically what our project is. All of the engineers that, every single one of them were more than overly qualified for this type of project. And the committee came to consensus that this would be the best option out of the ones that we were able to actually score.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is 1.10. Discussion regarding the use of Hill Country Defense Center and Eclipse Resource Stores as uses. I put this back on the agenda, and, Jake, well, glad you're here. I'm going to advise us. Those of us that are working on preparations for the total eclipse, the annual eclipse is not going to be here as gruesome as the total eclipse, but we're expecting 150,000 people coming to this camp, in addition to those of us that are here. It's pretty daunting. And we're looking to store, at this time, we need to store pallets of water and start accumulating those and distribute them around the camp. But we certainly need to have one central place. And we're looking, trying to get the Hill Country Defense Center to be a commitment for them to be the headquarters for this Eclipse of America. And quite frankly, as we've discussed, any events that you might consider putting on at the Youth Defense Center during the eclipse, you will not have. We're talking about, it's going to be total congestion out there, on freeway, streets, everywhere. So what we're looking for is, can we count on the Youth Defense Center being available for emergency management during the eclipse?
Thank you. Absolutely. We know that the Youth Defense Center is the county emergency evacuation point. We know it's all those things. For, you know, since we knew the eclipse was coming a few years ago, we've been in discussions with many groups. And what I'm going to ask for is direction from y'all for how much you want us to hold back. So in essence, we know that Monday's out, school's canceled. That is a specific day. Do you want anything going out there? Do you, you know, we're asking for just advice or just guidance?
The first management team that Deb and I have been meeting with, and Rich was there last night, and we met with various churches. We're trying to get this disseminated so it's not all in one place. And what we're looking at is, the discussion started with saying, well, we ought to plan on three days. And I think they would say probably at least five days. We're probably looking at Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and probably Monday and Tuesday, we won't get them all out of town by Monday afternoon, I doubt. So we're looking at probably about five days. The run-up to the weekend, weekend, and Monday. By Tuesday, we're probably not going to be using the Youth Defense Center other than just a vacay.
Sure. So you're asking for the entire campus for those five days with completely blocked out for none?
Not necessarily the entire campus, but what we're looking for right now is the ability to store, to accumulate and store pallets of water that we're going to need. And so we look at the indoor arena as a place that we ought, we think we ought to be able to find a place to be able to store that so that it's out of the way, out of the way, between now and then. But then from the actual management itself, we probably do need the building part, the headquarter and coordinate emergency services, countywide. So that would be.
When you say indoor, you mean the cell bar?
Dirt arena.
You don't mean the air conditioning part for storage, you mean the cell bar part.
Right, for storage, yes.
The dirt arena and the concrete floor.
But in terms of that weekend and that Monday, we'll probably be bringing in fire department, police department, sheriff's office, everybody is going to be headquartering out of Youth Defense Center itself.
Is this for both eclipses?
Well, the first one.
October.
The problem here is well-attended, so.
And that's good, because it can be a trial run.
Exactly. That's what we're calling it. We'll learn how to do this on the first one.
They had rented for one part of that time.
The which eclipse?
The first one.
The annual eclipse, yes. We have the Texas Hill Country Fly Fishers, and I believe that's a swap meet weekend. But the indoor arena is, of course, available, and classroom spaces can be made available, of course, as well.
I don't perceive that to be a problem.
You're not going to want to be inside watching eclipse, so whatever he has going on inside shouldn't be an issue. You need storage space for water.
Exactly. There has been some discussion, I think, as far as charging for parking out there, like around the arena, outdoor arena and stuff.
Be nice to see some revenue generating.
Exactly.
It's a choice of the court. There, we've done this in many other cities. It's a huge revenue boost, but it's up to y'all for what you deem, you want public safety held back as well.
I think there's a little further discussion. I could kind of see some concession sales going on out there just to serve the public. You know, all the restaurants and other places are going to be out of business, so to speak, or drop the block a little.
So you're talking like food trucks, Red State Food Trucks?
Out there by the outdoor arena, I think it'd be perfect to club them like, just like they're on the radio.
They would need to plan well in advance and make sure they're stocked up, because getting in and out is not going to be easy. But if you can get it all in there, I'm sure they'll sell out too.
Of course, y'all, y'all, your committee's been looking at all this. I mean, I'm wondering, where are all these quarterbodies coming from?
Well, we're working hard to try to get some over there.
Yeah.
The other thing, if they're not there.
Yeah. You have to talk to some of the counties that are a little further away.
Exactly, a couple hundred miles.
The other thing that we have, how many are these spaces out there we can rent?
32 with water.
So, I mean, that's a, yeah.
Of course.
And I think it needs to be coordinated, this, you know, we have to plan the facility and let the community figure out what's blocked off, what isn't.
Robyn? We need to vote you into this discussion.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been discussing for years, and we hadn't really fully set that up. And I apologize for not eating that charge.
I'll talk with Deb, and we'll make sure that you're invited to the next meeting. We meet one of the last, was it in work or something? I think it is, something like that. I'll give that information to you.
I would have one more caveat to add to that. Just as a note, since we didn't pass the bond, we do not have a loading dock. We do not have government-sized pallet jacks to unload a semi full of water. If it's FEMA water, we learned last time with the 2021 freeze that we had to call the fire department to have enough manpower to drag pallets around. So I would like that to be known, that we could probably alleviate that by just buying a different pallet jack, which I can do, and then we can forklift the back. But we do not have a loading dock at the facility.
I'll worry if you sit in when he's meeting with them.
And if he's, a second, you meant, big, or anything scheduled then?
I do have a local group that put down a deposit to do a banquet in the expo hall Saturday night. I, I can't say if they're going to pull it off or not, but there was been talks. And then I haven't contracted with anybody else. We do have a lot of, of course, interest in it, you know, ready in the parking lot. Even the city's reached out, because there's no parking for all these people, and we know that. So we do just want to make sure that we hold back and have the guidance of the court of what you would like to see revenue-wise. We know it's a ballet. We know it's compromising this way and that, so.
I'd make it be helpful for us if you sit down with your folks and came to us with some recommendations, plans that we could look at, how to do this. Certainly one of those you know what the city and county are doing. But this is going to have to be a very tightly coordinated effort. I'd be happy to dance with Jake Hollis and come up with a plan.
The thing with the plane across the street, and that is our little league field, that you not have real secure access, and people are likely to still want to see open spots right across. Yeah, maybe we could prefer a gang scene, or, because that's going to be in the middle. The first one, well, the second one, it's in April, right?
April.
Passion of the woodland season also. So that's something to look at for both of them.
Flat rock partners.
Do we just pull off the road and park there? Or do we want to pop a Pemba fence so people can't get in there, so?
Well, some of the conversations that we're having is, people just stop.
Yeah.
We're expecting them on 39. We're truly expecting 39 to be completely shut down, where people just sit in.
Jackie is.
As far as the committee, was, is there someone from Peterson Medical? And then also maybe the Kirville State Hospital, or is there somebody?
Same hospital's not there, but Peter Jesus, we get to say.
I think, I think that would, they have a storage facility for their own needs, but they might have equipment.
We have, what, 25, 30 people there, that's kind of, it's well-represented. But we're saying you see, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jay. Let's take our morning break. Come back in five minutes.
I know you did, and we talked about it, and honestly, I thought we had resolved that at one point, and we didn't. So it continues to come up. Now, Charlie is, uh... It's his duty to enforce the rules and to remind people that you can't do this. If we have model subdivision rules ruling us because we have grant money that's, you know, taken. We've got to, we've got to have a workaround that makes sense for the citizens of Kirk County. So when I talk to Gina or Headwaters about this in Monaco, they are in the process of mapping all of the local CCNs so that they know exactly how many people. It'll, it'll end up, because all of our subdivision rules are tied to water availability anyway. So it's going to end up that they're going to be the final word anyhow. And they're going to say at some point, there can be no more straws in the, or nobody else in this CCN because they can't provide more water based on what they're able to draw. So I, my suggestion is that we change our subdivision rules so that it reflects that. So that instead of some citizen having to pay god knows how much it is today to have a water availability study because they replanted a little piece of property that was eight or 10 acres or 20 acres or less, that, uh, that we get a letter from the water provider on their behalf saying, yes, we can take three more lots in this CCN, and everybody gets their 430 gallons of water that they're supposed to get. Because for somebody to go in and have a test well in Kirkville South over here because they want to change their plant line or have a, a family conveyance of, of land, that's just crazy. It's crazy, and it's, it's really a heavy burden on the taxpayer. And we shouldn't be doing that.
There's another issue to it. I'm not sure you can legally drill a well with a CCN.
Well, that's just it. You can't. You, you really can't. That's the other part of it. So they're between the dog and the fireplug on this. The guy who wants to just move his property lines so as to kidnap. So according to Headwaters, anything that is at least 1.97 acres, uh, basically should be exempt from this.
You're proposing an amendment to our...
I'm a, I'm a, well, I wanted all of us to discuss it and hear the input, and then I'll make my amendment. If somebody has a better idea, I'm always open to that.
I'd like for Charlie to look into it, as would Jean. Come back and give us a report.
Well, I'm here because Charlie and Jean can't get along.
That's not true.
It's not entirely, I don't mean personally, but the rules are like this. And, and Jean agrees with this, that we have to do something different for, uh, for the citizens of Kirk County.
It's a common sense deal.
It's co- make a common sense deal. But Charlie is bound to, to these rules as the county engineer. So that's why I'm bringing it up, because, uh, somebody has to intervene.
If I can say not to him, I can tell y'all, Mike, that's understandable.
And I'm not saying that you're at an impasse, but they are at an impasse.
You're going to make it clear that you can allow Jean, right?
The, well, the rules are, are an impasse for some folks. It's the rules. And my job is to make sure that we follow the rules. Period. The end. Our rules, uh, right now, say that you do water availability, whether you're under the model subdivision regulations or not, with the exception of, um, if all the lots are more than 20 acres, if, uh, there's between one and, or up to 10 lots that are, um, all five-plus acres, you don't have to do water va- water availability study there. But as soon as you have a subdivision that's 11 or more, you know, unless you're bigger than 20 acres with every lot, you have to do a water availability study. And then the third exception is, um, if you're in a, an existing, uh, subdivision, and you're doing a replat, and you're bigger than five acres with that lot that's, that's the replat, and you're already being served by a, a water provider, then you don't have to do a water va- availability study. Those are the three exceptions. Now, my understanding about a water availability study is that it's the math and the science put together by an engineer or a geoscientist that takes data from a well, whether it's existing or you just drilled it. But, and the problem is that if you've already got an existing system, they're per, they're counting on that water to go up into a tank and serve people. So my understanding, it's very difficult to run this test while everything's still in service. You may have to drill another well, another, to, you know, one close by in a, in a, in order to do the test. So that's the problem with some of these. But that's what a water availability study, it says, this is how much water we think is down in the aquifer. And it's my understanding from Headwaters that nobody has done that in this county except one developer.
One developer and, and Headwaters. So there are two wells. That's it. Now, we're asking people to do something that nobody else has done, really.
Well, that, in existing systems, but we've also been told by Headwaters, so I, I want to be careful we don't just adopt a rule and says, well, if you're in existing CCN, you don't have to do anything. We have existing CCNs that are, Headwater says, they're maxed out already.
That's the point. That's the point I'm making.
Right.
Up until a certain equation, we can continue to add, and they're going to maintain those numbers. There may reach a point where they say, you can't put any more in here, but right now, they're not there. So it, all of our rules now, Headwaters has a say in any of our subdivision rules based on water availability already. This one was overlooked, and as Commissioner Lentz said, we tried to get something done, didn't. It got overlooked. You have, your, your duty bound to stick with the subdivision rules and to enforce them. We have something here that fell through the cracks, that's not good for the citizens, and all the law is, should, should be good for the citizens of Kirk County, any, any rules we have. They put the bill, it's for their veteran joint-in-law life and their property. So we have to fix this.
Okay.
I would recommend that rather than, you can make a motion if you want, but I was saying, rather than try to cure it today, get something written as an addendum and bring it back to our next court.
Yeah, that's fine with me, to have it, uh, we could do it as a court order. I don't care how we do it. But I, but it needs to be fixed. Do you agree? Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
I agree.
Thank you for bringing it up.
You're going to need to post, uh, post it, and at the last court meeting that we had, y'all had three addendums to the rules already, and so there was a public hearing held. Will this one be a takings? Do you have to do a taking, takings impact assessment? I think there are other questions before here.
This wouldn't be a taking, this would be a undertaking.
This would be, exactly, because if the takings is, right now, that's what we're trying to cure.
So I would do a public hearing and another.
Well, then I'll move that we have a public hearing on this.
Articulate the language, right?
We articulate properly better than we want to say today. And I understand you say that there's something stuck through the cracks, but we need to have it articulated, quantified. See what we're really dealing with.
Well, that's what Jonathan's talking about, putting it together so everybody understands what it is, and I agree with that.
I'll visit with Headwaters and get this quantified, that we can put it in front of you and you can understand it.
You know what I need, Charlie?
Yes, sir.
We need to have it then, we adopted the format for doing these, we need to follow the format we adopted at our last meeting. Would you write and say this, add an in public hearing, and then have to do that, adopt it, but we have to have a page that says what we're actually doing.
Exactly. So that's what we're going to get to now. My recommendation in that is that we just, with this, the same as you've done everything else, follow the guidelines of Headwaters, and they're in the process of mapping all of these, and they have a formula. We adopt that formula to make life easy for everyone.
How about we have a workshop with Headwaters to sort them out?
I don't want to do the workshop. I just didn't get it written down on paper.
Yeah, we do, because, I mean, there's the for, I got the formula right here, so it's a real easy map of, uh, putting it together. When we have a workshop, we get a workshop.
Mary, ask a question. Your motion was to set up a public hearing. Did you have a particular date, or did you want to have the workshop and your proposal?
I'll, I'll rescind that. What I want to do is have, uh, have something to present.
Charlie can come up with something again.
Next agenda. I'm doing March 13th.
It might be tight, but we'll, we'll do our best.
It's not going to be that complicated. I mean, it may sound like it, and I don't want you to make it complicated.
I don't want to make it complicated.
But you do have to go through our, all the complicated parts, we have to go through all of our rules and making sure exactly where we're making the change.
The hard part's boiling it all down.
So it does, maybe, it's going to take a little bit of time to do it.
And Charlie, it's, I said March 13th, I know you're swamped. You and Bobby both are. So it's the following one or whatever.
We're shooting for March 13th. We, we will. I'll get with Jean, and, you know, however long it takes.
Okay. Charlie, go away. I'm going to call 10 o'clock items. We have four items items at 10 o'clock. And I took that one because I wanted him to address it. Now move to 10 o'clock. Item 1.15, consider discussing take appropriate action to offer engineering department vehicle as a trade-in for a new vehicle.
Following vehicle will be picked up by Enterprise Fleet Management to be sold due to the receipt of a new vehicle, a 2007 Chevy Silverado, VIN number 2GCEK13Z571151737, license plate number 119-1812. This is in, uh, performance with, uh, the court adopting budget for engineering department to get two, uh, leased vehicles. We're only getting one. We want to take it one step at a time. I believe y'all approved two and said, just get one. And, uh, that truck is ready to be ordered. That's the next agenda item. But first, we want to get permission to have this one, um, sold by Enterprise.
Motion and second to approve, uh, creating the new vehicle in the engineering department. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. unanimous. Item 1.16, consider discussing take appropriate action to approve lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for vehicle for engineering department. This is the new vehicle, right, Charlie?
Yes, sir. The, we had a budget of $1,000 a month, and I believe this is $952 a month. And, uh, as soon as it can be ordered, uh, as soon as it gets authorized by the, we're asking the court to authorize the judge to execute this agreement with Enterprise.
Got a motion and second to approve purchase of the new vehicle for the engineering department. Any discussion?
This is the first one we have come to. The price is lower than the previous, but it's $148 lower, so.
Okay. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. unanimous. Next item, 1.17, consider discussing take appropriate action for the court to authorize county judge to execute the 2023 road reconstruction project with Dirt Boys Inc. from San Antonio, Texas in the amount of $242,083.53.
Thank you, Judge. The 2023 road reconstruction project consists of the reconstruction of Skyline Drive located in center, the same, Center Point area, precinct two. Plans and specifications have been prepared by the county engineer for the reconstruction of approximately one to 2.2 miles of Skyline Drive. The bid package has been broken down into one mile, a one-mile base bid and quarter-mile increments, uh, of additive alternates up to the total 2.2 miles. Precinct two bids were opened on February 13th, 2023, and the lowest qualified bidder, uh, was determined to be Dirt Boys Inc. from San Antonio, Texas in the amount of $242,083.53. We've gone through our qualifications to make sure that we're hiring a good contractor. We feel very comfortable with this. We've met with them already, and this is for the full 2.2 miles. We're very, very pleased with the price on this. Kind of unbelievable. County engineer requests that the court authorize the county judge to execute 2023 road reconstruction project with Dirt Boys Inc. from San Antonio, Texas in the amount of $242,083.53, precinct two. And before anyone makes a motion or votes on that, uh, we're leaving a hun- about $100,000 on the table, um, from this. We budgeted 350. Um, we had a discussion this morning with Road and Bridge, and they would like for us to, uh, engineering department, put a second bid package together to maybe try to get another road done. Hopefully, this same contractor can bid on that project and keep his prices this low. That would be amazing. We don't know what will happen. It's a, you never know what's going to happen when you're bidding. But we would like to do that also.
Hustle up and get it done while it's still going here.
Yes, sir.
Could that save all the...
I move that the court authorize county judge to execute the 2023 road reconstruction project with Dirt Boys Inc. from San Antonio, Texas in the amount of $242,083.53 for precinct two. Got a motion and a second to approve the road construction of Dirt Boys Inc. presented. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. unanimous. Last time item, item 1.18, consider discussing take appropriate action for the court to approve the revision of plat for Heavenly Acres Track Five. Any questions?
Judge, this proposal revises Track Five, 15.71 acres, as plotted into two tracks. Track Five A will be 5.09 acres, and Track Five B will be 10.60 acres. Both lots will front Harper Valley Road. Uh, we had a public hearing on January the 9th, 2023. Nobody spoke. County engineer requests the court approve a revision of plat for Heavenly Acres Track Five, Volume Seven, pages 317 through 318, precinct four. And before you vote, um, just a quick update on this plat was grandfathered, um, under the old rules, and it's the ninth out of 18 that have come before you. We've got nine more to go that were grandfathered under 2007 rules.
I move for approval. Second. Got a motion and a second to approve, uh, the revision of plat for Heavenly Acres Track Five. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. unanimous. Now, let's go back to item 1.12, that's item number 12. That is, consider discussing take appropriate action to accept the racial profiling report in the 198th District Attorney's Office. Mr. Burris is out here. Does he want to retain?
Say.
Got a motion and a second to approve, uh, the racial profiling report in 198. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. unanimous. Item 1.13, consider discussing take appropriate action to approve and submit for publication the request for sealed bids for lease of the Kirk County Juvenile Facility located at 3499 Leaning Drive, Kirkville, Texas. I put this on the agenda. We have renewed interest from Ryan Passage. We visited with our county attorney, and she suggested that we go ahead and repost the RFP. I told Ryan Passage that we're waiting for her to do this. We put a 30-day time limit on it because we expect him to get back with his equipment. But it looks like we're going to be able to get some to them. But the, the general with the lease terms, uh, we wouldn't put any terms in it. We're looking for, uh, they're going to have to spend probably $152,000 to get it certified back at the code. And we're looking to give them some sort of incentive on the first end of lease to send by us. We're going to do this one. Got a move for approval? Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, uh, to approve, uh, the request for sealed bids for the lease of the Kirk County Juvenile Facility. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. unanimous. Next item is 1.14, consider discussing take appropriate action to change Lisa Walter, public relations director, from a part-time employee to a full-time employee, and change her job restrictions to include website maintenance and updates. And for those of you that haven't been paying attention, I've been cracking to it for the last couple of weeks trying to get this website about to run. And I finally had it hand with and begged Lisa to help me on this. And she graciously agreed after she consulted with you. And as of today, I know that we have an additional 92.5 hours that she's put in just in this last big hearing. Trying to get this thing up and running. The good news is that we're going to have effective this website. The bad news is we're not going to have it till about mid-March. But what she's done, and I have here color-coded and printed. You recognize this? About 20 pages of little things that need to be run to ground, fine-tuned, and bugs taken out of this website before we open it up. We don't want to be embarrassed and open it up and have everybody have all kinds of little nitpicky problems with it. We want it to go seamlessly. And I had, I think I've said, what, two artificial deadlines when I wanted it up?
Maybe more. It's been about a year for all of it.
Well, uh, realistically, and I have visited with the boss, and she tells him that, that's jody. Tells me that we can have it done about 15. And so, uh, what I'd like to do is go ahead and bring her on board as a full-time employee. We've had an extensive conversation about being her back here at the courthouse. And this, this being the whip site manager, or whatever you call it, the, uh, is, is, is going to be a big job. Webmaster. And it's, and it falls naturally into her area because she does all the press releases for all the public notices.
Exactly.
And it leaves liaison position just the way it is.
I thought we did the one, last time we met. We had that one person responsible.
It is, it is not budgeted, okay? But we do have, uh, potentially, what potentially does to be able to do a budget amendment, to put it in the budget. It's not that we don't have the money. We do have the money. But it will be budgeted for next fiscal year.
A question from when Clint was here last time. Did he has a monthly maintenance fee, I believe? Or did he kind of said that he was supposed to, I mean, how much is that? And with some of that money, if we're going to be doing it in-house, could we just owe that money as opposed to paying us as consultants?
I think that's a conversation that we need to have. Right now, what I'm trying to do is just get the damn thing out of the way. Then we can slide out how we're going to do it. He wanted us to have somebody in-house.
I don't blame him.
I don't blame him. Well, I resisted it, and it didn't work, and he was right.
We did it in-house.
Having somebody go with a service contract ongoing versus what leases will be required to. They're different things, yeah. So there are things that can go wrong with the website or access or, or rebuilding something that Clint can do, that she can do. She can post, she can edit, she can put links in and that kind of stuff. She doesn't write code or any of that sort of thing.
My guidance, it tells me what you're saying is exactly true, and I think you're going to tell me the same thing. I do not have sufficient information to be able to articulate the specifics of that today and make sure that we got, uh, fairly priced everywhere.
Now, you know how I felt when I was trying to remember what the CCN stood for. You didn't think, when you put it on the agenda, you didn't think anybody would question you. Well, I thought I'd remember that. I've said it enough. I'd remember.
Bruce?
The, there's three things that the website does. One is they have a server that, that's part of what that maintenance fee is for. That's the, the hosting of the, the visual side of it. At the county, we still have where we load the files into the system that the other side accesses. And that's what, uh, is kind of a combination between myself and Lisa. And then she has the front-facing that everybody sees.
Well, and I want to understand more about that, but I'm going to take it one step at a time, and I want to get her on board first.
Okay.
And, and we'll get...
Well, the guy, the guy that details your car doesn't work on the engine.
That's right.
That's a easy one to talk about.
But I need these done.
Yeah.
So I move that we hire Lisa Walters, full-time employee. I work with Carmen and Rosa. Try to get the job script together, uh, and we'll come up with a grade step.
Live second.
Finally, we'll jump to the changes at this point.
At this point.
Effective, I guess, after job script, sorry. I think for...
When should it be effective for Rosa? From, from a payroll standpoint, it's crazy, I think. Whether we do, I mean, it seems it's a lot easier, simpler, or is it simpler to do it at a pay period break or?
It is, because they have as much calculation with you pay grade.
Well, we're, we're working at part-time, so we miss part-time hours right now, but, uh, when should we start?
Full-time. So you got a lot of part-time.
So then, when should we do, when should we do the start pay, to make someone's salary pay off?
I would say starting today because of the fact that she, today is the beginning of a pay period.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Second. You should be smiling.
I'm crying.
Because she knows what the job's really entail.
Any other discussion? Have we added any other positions? I mean, my concern is just that we keep rolling the sidelines.
May I, may I interrupt for a second? Um, you also may want to, um, right now, she is at an hourly, um, so you may also want to think about the pay grade because she's not in a pay grade right now.
Okay.
That's during budget time, isn't it?
So are you going to keep her hourly just to keep everything clear?
Well, do you have a recommendation on, on grade and step?
We were discussing that, and we thought about, um, the 24.
Step one.
Yeah, 24, step one.
Grade 24, step one?
Yes.
Okay.
That matches the hourly rate that...
It...
Sort of.
The 24.
Well, I think this webback is going to be more intensive than we are.
Yeah, it's more responsibility, and it brings her up. It is a, it is a job.
So we looked at the nature of the job and similarly situated positions in order to determine.
Yes, in order to determine the grade.
So we looked at the job and similarly situated positions as well as the comp study. Compared the, uh, minimum requirements, um, the level of expertise needed for the position, and felt that that was a suitable pay grade and step.
Okay, so this is at, uh, grade 24?
Step one.
Step one. Yes, sir.
And your question? Well, my question is, are we creating any other new positions? It just kind of feels like we keep creating positions and growing the size of our government, and is there truly a need to do it? There is truly a need for this webmaster.
Absolutely.
But what you've seen, though, Rich, part of it is that there have been people who have been at the wrong grade or step, and that was being corrected. So it looks like something new is being created. It's still same employees, but now they have a different position or grading or whatever. So it looks like we've dealt with that a lot lately, just because we're trying to get it fixed, because it's, it hasn't been, uh, where it should be for a long time.
I think the only one we've added recently went to the Treasury Department, that was budgeted in the budget.
Yes, yes.
Of the budget division.
And as a general rule, we address the new employee issue during the budget process. As, as, as the auditor and I sit here right now, of the things we're full-time, we don't have anybody new that will plan to put in the budget. Like this is the department heads and the like positions. And I know we have a few gaps where we don't have people like at Road and Bridge.
Right.
Yeah. Well, they, they probably don't want to hand you up any of their blades.
No. We have plans to get this statement out.
And, and Rich, if you've tried to do anything with our current webpage, and us here probably know it better most, and I still can't get anything done with it. It's terrible. I mean, it's one of the worst I've ever seen, and I looked up a bunch of different counties. It is absolutely terrible, and that's something we need to fix for the public, you know? Because they, they get frustrated, and they just give up. And this new webpage should be a benefit to all departments in that people can find answers without having to call here or foot traffic through different departments. And, and that's the ultimate goal, that it should be a big benefit in the long run. I know, and I understand where you're coming from.
Cost and growing the size of government, and, and I'll just throw out there as a final comment, hey, I, I made a webpage for myself when I was campaigning. It didn't cost much.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you didn't have as many departments, yeah.
Well, that's true.
And maintain.
And I'm not, again, I have to say that it's...
I think it's going to be a costly comparison, but, well, for its phone calls and letting, you know, people in the tax office get other work done, rather than said we answer phones, our foot traffic out at Road and Bridge and things like this. And that was the ultimate goal when we initiated this process.
Well, and, and without getting personal, uh, we brought Lisa on as part-time as an accommodation to her situation at the time, and we truly had the need for full-time PR director, full-time webmaster.
I wanted it in the last budget.
I know you did. And so with his passing, it's not personal. And so, uh, with his passing, it's not personal.
Just there, uh, need to restate your motion, just to make sure I have it right?
Okay. To re, I've, I've, I've got a second over here. Uh, to restate the motion, I move that we, uh, change Lisa Walter, our public relations director, from a part-time employee to a full-time employee, and change her job description to include the website maintenance and updates to the webmaster, at a grade twenty-four, step one. That's the motion.
So effective today?
Effective today.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. I reluctantly.
That was an aye in favor?
Yes.
A reluctant aye.
Yes.
We've, we've got a reluctant unanimous vote. Moving on to item one point twenty. Consider discussing appropriate action surplus to Hill Country Regional Public Defender's Office items to Medina County. And this is what, fiscal agenda as of ten one, twenty twenty-two?
Yes. So that was the date that the, um, Hill Country Regional Public Defender's Office became, um, Medina County became the fiscal agent of it. We still have some items on the books for them. The majority of it are computers on the list that you see that we have on our depreciation schedule. So the cost of those were about thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. We depreciated almost six thousand, so the book value of those are twenty-seven thousand dollars. These were all bought with the grant, so that is one they should follow with the grants. The people, employees that were our employees that moved to Medina still have those computers. And the other list is your office inventory. There's items that do not make it because they cost, because of the cost, and so they just stay on the inventory list. And so you have a list of those items also.
This is all stuff that we bought with the grant funds, and they were part of Kirk County. And we should be fiscal responsibility to Medina County. They, they move over to that office.
Yes, there's also items here that were originally surplus from Medina County to Kirk County to help build the building, so we're returning the favor.
I move for approval. Got a motion in second to approve, uh, the surplus items of the public defender's office as presented. Any discussion?
Just, I mean, verify that the, I think the, the surplus items will stay in Kirk County. There's gonna be pretty much, well, so Medina County wanted to stay here, I guess, but they're gonna stay here with a likelihood. But they'll be on the books of Medina County, not books of Kirk County.
Okay. We'll come up with her to do this.
Right.
Yes.
Just, just one other comment. You know, we, we've already talked about leasing the juvenile detention facility. We have an awful lot of stuff stored out there. And if we're successful, we're gonna have to get rid of that stuff and move it.
Get rid, move it, get, get rid of.
Most, at least. That's not the item.
That's not the item we're talking about. That's a discussion. We need to, you're getting off the agenda. Trying to, trying to.
If you wanna recall that item later and, and make your point, that would be.
Part of her job.
No, I was reading her body language, and he couldn't see her. Okay.
She was staring holes through you.
I, I was looking Heather to see if we're getting too far off.
What you're telling me is I need to put this on next court's agenda?
You could, or you could recall the agenda item for the RFP to have some discussion about what's gonna happen with the, with the stuff in the building.
Yeah. I'll do that after we close out this one. Okay. Everyone in favor for surplus, surplus of the items for PBO? Aye.
Aye.
Any, anybody here? Good. So now we move on to. Recall the other one now, or do I have to wait?
That's fine, that's fine now.
Good.
One fourteen, oh, I'm sorry, one thirteen.
One thirteen, yeah, I'd like to recall agenda item one point thirteen, and just briefly discuss, what are we gonna do with all the surplus equipment and material that's sitting in the juvenile detention facility? Should we be successful in leasing it out? And my observation is, I saw an awful lot of old office furniture, apparently nobody seems to want it. And I also saw a bunch of, uh, computing equipment, that, you know, vintage floppy disk drive. And I can't imagine that that stuff has any use whatsoever. It has to be surplus. So I would just encourage somebody to take action, to, uh, to evaluate that stuff and bring it to the court. And I will tell you, the biggest problem is when we put this stuff that's stored over at juvenile detention, are the voting machines, all the voting materials. Right, we have those under double lock and key. Uh, we're going to Kirk County, we got a triple A rating from the state next to our security, our footage equipment, uh, which is nice to have, but we're gonna have to provide that. Well, there's a lot of documents. Yeah, a lot of documents. And, but at least the surplus equipment, since we, we were talking about.
That's about it, but surplus, I can surplus. Storage is a huge problem, and that's part of the stuff that we've been looking at.
It's coming up in a minute.
Okay.
Okay. We'll move on to item one point twenty-one. Consider discussing appropriate action on the implementation of the Birdman. Time to do it.
I'll need approval.
Second. Got a motion in second to approve the implementation of Birdman procedures? Any discussions? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. Anyamis? Item one point twenty-two. Consider discussing appropriate action to approve the, uh, ADID Bastian Agreement, and the amendments entitled Schedule A, Addendum, and Schedule D, incorporate into the contract with Fiddler Technologies Board Order Number three nine three seven one, regarding the new records management system in the county clerk's office.
Hello. Okay, so this is, um, the Bastian service agreement is, as far as storing the records electronically on a different environment than what we anticipated. Um, the funding, um, will come out of the current budget, uh, some of my budget, and also IT's budget for our discussions. Um, this will increase the agreement this year, seven thousand, in this particular contract that I'm requesting judge's approval on. The, and that would fall under pages five, six, and seven of your handout. And then also, I'm asking for a revision in Schedule D, which allows for the monarch export, which allows me to fulfill public information requests. And that is a four thousand dollar, uh, ask, but it's also, that's the part that's in my budget, uh, already. And then page, well, the very last page, the last two pages, judge, would require your signature as well. Uh, it spells out the monarch export and the total investment for this year, uh, showing an increase of four thousand this year. Again, money that's already budgeted. And this, um, are there any questions? I know it was a lot to kind of spill out, but I'm definitely.
I don't recall those companies that made it before.
Okay, so it's.
So Bastian.
It's, so Bastian is the program that's, uh, dispersed by Fiddler.
Okay.
And so we were under replication, where we were basically copying our records to our internal server. But because there was not enough room?
Yeah.
Not enough room. Uh, we needed more room than we anticipated. Bruce is actually, uh, on board with it being on the Bastian environment, which is external cloud. So we're basically paying for that service, which Bruce thinks is actually better. And so I would agree with his assessment.
What's the, do you have a total amount of the?
The difference? So for this budget year, um, for the Bastian part, it's seven thousand, because we've already invested nine on the replication. Um, and I asked, do I need to replace replication? And they said, no, because it's kind of, that's what Bastian will be doing. It's just moving from one environment. There's no need to rescind it, is what I was told. Um, yeah, so that's on that one. Um, but the four thousand is the monarch export, which is another program Fiddler will provide me. It's a tool in order for me to access recorded records in order to fulfill public information requests. So that four thousand is a, is a, is a new cost, because it's a new tool, but it's gonna be coming out of my budget that I have some room for.
You'll do budget memo, then?
Say again?
You'll do a budget memo?
Exactly, yes. So.
Seven thousand dollars new one.
I'm sorry?
It's a seven thousand dollars new, new one increase.
Uh, seven thousand plus the four, yeah. So eleven. But it's two different programs.
Are these coming, should you have dedicated funds, the minority term fund? Or is that your general budget?
The, in, in, uh, in the future, it will, I'm gonna, it, it will. But this year, uh, because it's dedicated, I would have to have, that, that cannot be done unless it's in a public hearing. So I have money in my budget out of general fund that will be used, plus what Bruce has, um, in order to cover that. But in the next budget, yes, I, I look to putting that in the dedicated fund. Now, also, keep in mind, these costs are actually gonna be recouped by the public information requests, because the export will be, it's an added program for me to have to purchase. I have to purchase the environment, so that, so under the Public Information Act, I can recoup that cost. So between ten users, that's twelve hundred dollars a year, that, that will cover a lot of that cost. So I'm just requesting the approval of the court.
Okay. I have a question about the terminology, the replication.
Yes. Yes.
Does that mean you keep an in-house copy of this, or all of it goes away?
So the replication is an in-house copy. So right now, we have an in-house copy of everything up to February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
And we're gonna store it in a safe place?
I have it stored in a safe place, correct.
I mean, this is gonna be a vault of a replication. So if anything happens, anything here, courthouse burns down, you still have all the records?
Absolutely.
So my question then becomes this. Why do we need anything to access those documents? Anything, we already have the documents here. If somebody requests a document, don't you have your?
Up to two, up to February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. But when EDOT goes away, which is, this Fiddler will be replacing EDOT, I will no longer have that tool in order to access, or I would have to get with IT to pull all my records for up to two thirteen, twenty twenty-three. But with the monarch export, I'll be able to access, including Laserfish records, the EDOT records, from two fourteen and present, if that makes sense.
What I'm trying to get to is, now, if we're gonna keep in-house records, and we're gonna have them backed up someplace else.
Under the old.
And you're, you're giving us a date of, did you say the thirteenth of this month?
Yes.
That you no longer are keeping them in-house at all? Is that it?
No, I will, I will be.
Bruce is shaking his head, so.
Will.
So once I get the monarch export, I will be able to have access directly to the records. Is that so right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't make sense, you already have access to the records.
To the old records. But see, the, the live system.
You've already started storing these as of the thirteenth of this month in a new way?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you won't be able to retrieve them for taxpayers at their request without some new form of software?
So the public will be able to access them through the website, and that's in the designated contract already called Ava, whole other program. That allows them to get an unofficial copy at no cost for that print.
A review copy.
Correct. If they would like to pay for an official copy, that can go through Tapestry, another part of the contract, and they can pay for the search fee and retrieve the document without contacting the county clerk's office.
They can do it from home.
They can do it right.
Pay through this thing?
Now, that's Tapestry. Now, let's talk about Monarch.
Okay.
Monarch Export will allow me to download the records needed for our title companies and the other requesters, such as Zillow, Texas File, uh, Texas, East Texas Title, so on and so forth. Monarch Export will allow me to download bulk data for them through the Public Information Act. Otherwise, I won't have that ability to do a bulk data download, or I have to ask Bruce and Fiddler to do. That's the solution, basically, is to fulfill public information requests through base, it's called a subscription fee, basically.
Well, you said the magic word, bulk, so.
Bulk, yes. Yes, data miners. Oh, also, this, um, program allows for the property fraud alert, which is available right now to the public. If you go directly to the Kirk County clerk's website, you'll see a link to property fraud alert. You may sign up and receive alerts if anything gets filed in your name in the property records. That is a free service. I say free, it's free, it's an indirect service charge through this contract that we pay as a county. But it takes care of the customer to be able to sign up for property fraud. So it's a lot of good things with this, um, system, so. But as far as the agenda item goes, um, in order to fulfill the public information requests, I'll need access through a bulk data download tool, which is Monarch Export.
Okay. Did somebody move?
Are there any other questions?
No, no one.
No.
You move for approval? Yeah.
Second.
Got a motion in second to approve the Abbott-Bastian agreement and the amendments entitled Schedule A, Addendum, and Schedule D, incorporate into the contract with Fiddler Technologies for the county clerk's office. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. Anyamis? Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Item one point twenty-three. Discussion regarding the process of solving capital needs.
As opposed on the agenda, uh, we had the final meeting from the CIP last meeting. We gotta figure out how we're gonna, what's gonna, how we're gonna start moving forward, what the priorities are, um, kind of get a game plan, because we have to address all that. I mean, in my personal opinion, the top two priorities, well, storage may got moved up today, but, um, the Hill County Defense Center and Andrew Mannix. I mean, uh, we've gotta figure out what we're doing with those two. To me, the, uh, whether it's the biggest issue in the store or somewhere. And we just need to figure out how we're gonna move forward, how we're gonna do, you know?
There would be a long time for the annex.
Right.
But, but if you're gonna, right, because if you're gonna build something or find a proper building, yeah.
Well, and it was just perfect timing that we were able to get the upgrade that we have now.
Right.
Either my speed moved out of it because of deficiencies, you know? Major repairs on the horizon. But it was so, it was, uh, so much better for us than what we had.
Yeah. I think Jordan made a good idea, I guess you go to EIC for everything.
I, I agree.
I think, you know.
Perfect.
Was that, are they closing here? Yeah.
Well, it generates revenue, that's what the EIC is about. It's a proven revenue generator, but it has problems.
It is deficient, and we have to do something to that.
Yeah. So anyway, I just, you know, I don't have the answers, I just wanted to start moving.
Well, I've given some thought. Not as much as it need and required. But, uh, as I look at the West Coast County Annex, we need to start looking now. We're talking about either my speed, whether they're interested in possibly selling, or at least for as long a term, we know they're gonna have to roof on that building. That's the big expenses coming up. Double. He's a relatively new roof, but it was just leaking, uh, uh, convictions to the. Bobby told me it was a new roof. And, uh, either the disclaimer that, he said, you know, two, you know, maybe three years, probably two. He came here to see if it was gonna pull up. So he's, he's already given us the disclaimer. So he's, he's already given us the disclaimer, that's fair. But we need to be looking at that. There are no other prospect progress in West Kerr Annex, I don't know. And I was hoping the CFP did a very good job going back in thirty days, let's take a look at what was available for it.
There was some piece of property we looked at.
That bought?
We bought, that we bought, that's right.
No, it's property.
Okay, so.
My next thing, the high school.
What about that one?
Well, that's.
We just have to build something more.
Exactly.
Kind of money to build.
Well, and, and, in, in that regard, we can look at the general fund, and what kind of monies we might have in the general fund to pay, that means you gotta pay for the whole project upfront, you don't get financing opportunities. We did use the tax anticipation, though, to move that property, and the other parts of the building, I don't know if you bought all of that, but we got nineteen and a half acres, ten thousand square feet of office space, thirty-seven hundred square foot building for the tax office, and an acre and a half of Ingraham Memorial High School, property up the street, ADA compliant, new roof, and hundreds of very parking places, ten and a half dollars. And we have it at forty-seven, five percent interest, which is pretty good. Don't know what we can do with the six hundred Earl Garrett Building. It's not an ADA compliant. We might be able to use that temporary storage out of the ember, yes, but that's a possibility. Another thing that's in, in, in whim, that we're not sure exactly how it's gonna work, but PEO, Hill Country Regional PEO, is looking to open a birdie office, because the lawyers that work for the public during the office can't afford housing in Kerr County, which is another thing.
Or San Antonio, or they, but San Antonio's closer.
But they, they come from San Antonio, that's what they're saying. And so there is a possibility that the first floor of the five fifty building may open up for candidates, that's, I'm just putting it out there, it's a possibility. Other than that, the Hill Country Defense Center, we've got to fix the electrical, we've got to fix the roof, we've got to fix several of those things.
The electrical, for sure.
Right, Steve, you go ahead. I'm just thinking of the do it. Well, we, we do it in the general fund?
Yes.
Or go to EIC, or do tax anticipation.
But isn't it also, are there some other funds that, so?
Yes, you got about three?
Yeah.
At EIC.
Yeah, that's first.
But things that are hazardous like electrical, I mean, we should just be fixing that. I mean, I'm, I'm told it's just some outlets, and, I mean, I, I don't.
No, you have to redo the whole.
It's, it's a step.
Yeah. Bring in the different, get three and power per table, it's a, it's a major, it's a hundred thousand.
But it needs to be done.
It needs to be done.
So I think what we can do is keep this on the radar screen and report back if we have more questions. I met with Tanya and Bob Reese last week, we talked about some possibilities we're funding as well, that we need to do a little investigative work there, but we'll see if that opens any avenues as well. I'm also aware of some things that potentially could have an impact on West Kerr Annex as well, but it's too early to bring that to the court. But I do think that, and I'm aware that there's a bunch of storage spaces available in Kerr County Annex. And Kerr County Annex, well, the, uh, the old ISE, there, there, there's space out there that could be utilized as well.
I have a temper.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
It would be temporary, because we know where it never temporary.
Right.
But we, we've gotta make sure it doesn't move away. I just think we need to start, I mean, really, move forward on some of the plans, and I'm glad they believe I'm working on getting our application with the EIC and bring it to the court. Is the idea to, you know, all of the above, or kind of we need to have, try to get funds for, I, which, I mean, or we need to think about it more and bring it back and kind of?
Well, I think it's a great idea to go to EIC and, and start the process. I do think we need to take a much closer look, the Ag Barn in particular, and do we really want a concrete floor or not, particularly the whole grid, because I've talked to a lot of people that say, no, that's a mistake, so. We gotta get the old one out. What's that? I agree with that.
Well, it depends on.
You'll talk to a whole lot of people who think it needs to be concrete, you know?
Well, if in doubt, when it comes to spending, you know, four million bucks or whatever that price tag is.
Well, we gotta figure out what the, we gotta figure out the scope before you go to EIC. And I think EIC is gonna be, I have no idea, but, you know, I don't wanna even start.
So the, if we do it the same way that we did at the bottom issue, it's à la carte. We know, we know the roof needs to be fixed, we know the electric needs to be fixed, those are priorities and those are essential, that has to be done. If it comes to concrete floor or anything thereafter, then that would be the, the à la carte. These first two have to go together and then must be done. So that would be the price tag, or that'd be the thing to go to the EIC, and that's easy enough to find now.
I ask people who are sorry to send the floor.
Well, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about if somebody fixes the roof, somebody that doesn't.
One of the things that we can do, cost considered, let me tell you.
Didn't we have somebody look at the roof out there and give us a?
Peter, yeah.
You talking about the skylights?
Do what?
You talking about the skylights? Which building?
No, I'm talking about at the, at the Ag Barn and the old barn.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there were a lot, there was a lot of roof damage out here, and that was one that got looked at, some of them got fixed, that would have been several years ago.
We made a project out of it.
It was hail damage that was looked at here and several of the other buildings.
And we got all the skylights replaced, though.
It was fixed.
Remember how dark it was? I think it's already been.
Cypress did.
Cypress did.
Yes.
Cypress did ours, too.
Yeah, that's right. So some of that was fixed, but I thought we had a, we have never taken bids for the whole.
We haven't taken bids, but we, we had a estimate, I mean, you can't, no one's gonna give you a, a price until you put it out.
Right, right.
Till you have the estimate.
We have all parts.
Maybe what we do with EIC is just we put out our fees and.
I'll live with them and find out what the process, that never, I don't know, the EIC is.
But those are the two, the roof and the electric. Sure, everybody agree on those?
And those are the two, I mean, I'm trying to ask for all.
Yeah, I might as well.
And then, two, they say?
George mentioned six million, so is that potentially the upper limit that you would get from EIC?
EIC has, they obligate you going into the future, so that's an obligation.
Anyway. We're talking. Anything else to say?
I mean, yeah, the thought is, I mean, it would be, I would encourage you, Commissioner, to, to executive session, to do, to let the court know what's working, the work, so that we're not working on, you know, what we're working on, probably Ingraham Annex, so we have some idea where we're going, because we gotta start solving the problems that came up with that in play.
Okay. Moving on to item one point twenty-four, consider discussed appropriate action to authorize repair of damaged roads due to the Eastern County Center Point wastewater sewer project.
I put this on the agenda, really, just because at that time, we didn't know how it paid, it's gonna show up today.
It did that.
It did.
Okay.
And the other thing is, just so that Mr. Pacers and Judge Kelly can update the court as to the results of the meeting with DeGara, and so the other, you know, so we look for where, what happened, because what you do, Ben, that you could talk to, or anybody else.
Well, I think it was a really good meeting, and it was particularly encouraging when they were gonna start the road repairs last Monday. And then shortly into the week, we got word from DeGara that the subcontractor couldn't do it last week, and they had some conflicts, but they would get it this week. So again, as long as it gets done this week, then, then we're seeing significant progress. And in the meantime, we've seen a number of planes coming through that raise concerns about the financial conditions of our subcontractors. But at least for now, things are moving forward, the project is nearing completion, and the, the target is still April for completion of our facer. I would describe it as a very collaborative, constructive meeting, all parties committed trying to work together, did the same here, with DeGara doing its share. And he was personally not present, but the people and Matt were, and they were very forthcoming, and I think all of their, getting pretty positive about it. Of course, my big concern is, I don't want the general contractor to walk that job. That, that would be a disastrous exit if they pick that up. So that's why I say, I felt like it was very constructive and very collaborative, everybody working together, trying to get it.
I think DeGara was trying.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, it is.
The fact that they're out working today makes me feel much better.
I mean, DeGara, I'm just, it's a matter of, we just need to make sure the project gets done.
One of the things that we discussed, well, we were talking about several different things. One was whether or not Hill Country Telephone could expedite their work schedule, try and help us with the, the board there, and splicing the state. And DeGara came up with the creative idea that they were on the board from the opposite side of the road, to be able to get it closer, so that we're not losing so much time. So all things considered, we came up with some creative approaches, in its own, relatively own track.
And, and they've done that for.
Yeah.
They, they stuck with their word on that.
Yeah.
I, I think one of the other things that came out of the meeting is that there's a number of items that we were hoping to add to DeGara's contract to get done, so we could kind of walk away from this once and for all, and say, everyone's connected, it needs to be connected, and that's not gonna happen. They're not interested in adding any more to their work, and so the, the court needs to think about, do we have a phase four that closes everything out? It would be relatively small, very small project to close everything out, but it would be.
I think, based on the emails, Mr. Pacers, I reckon we need to do some time in the future.
Okay. So that takes us to item one point twenty-five.
But you'll need to remember that you'll need to vote.
You have to vote that?
That, I'm, I'm gonna read you.
Discussing in public is detrimental.
To the negotiations with a third party. I sent you the written opinion this morning, and so you have that in your email, but you'll need to vote, and the vote has to be unanimous.
Before we do that, I want to go ahead and call the item, because we do have someone that wants to speak on that issue, I don't want to respect that. So let me go ahead and call item one point twenty-five, consider discussed appropriate action regarding the interlocal agreement between Kerr County and the city of Kerrville, with the provision of animal control services within the city of Kerrville, and services of the butthole, court, memorial, and residence of Kerr County. About to call back, and I know a member of the public wanted to speak, he liked it, and can't do it, go ahead, vote him with his time. This is Miss Ferguson.
Barbara Doyle Ferguson, I live here in Kerrville. I just wanted to say to the county commissioners how much I appreciated your addressing this whole issue and taking the stance that you have. The city, this issue is not solved for the city yet, it may be ended here for the county commissioners, but as both a city and a county resident, I really appreciate the time, the effort, the listening, and you're reaching out to the city to try to reach some kind of agreement. But I think you're, sometimes it's very difficult to do the right thing, and a lot of times, the result immediately isn't maybe what you'd hoped for, but it's still the right thing to do. I really appreciate it.
Barbara, I'd like to thank you for your dedication towards this issue, and what you've done behind and, and in front of the scenes.
Okay, I've called the, the agenda item, and I understand that this is going to be a motion for us to do this in executive session. Will you take a vote on that?
You'll need to take a vote on whether deliberation over the meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the court with negotiations with a third party, that is the city.
So I move that, uh, for a second. Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Who seconded it? I'm sorry, I heard three different. Thank you.
Okay. Those who say aye? Can I ask one simple question? I know there was correspondence between the Commissioners' Court and the City Council. Did a meeting ever happen?
Yes.
That's good.
I'm gonna vote, okay.
We have a vote in here.
Oh, I thought I heard.
We voted a question before you voted. So now, those who are currently going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Close. So we have unanimous vote.
Well, you can do that, I see the agenda, though.
Did we?
We'll get back there.
Did we do, uh, one, twenty-one?
Yes.
We did?
Yes, yes.
Must have been zoning out or something.
Yeah, it was way down.
It was.
A lot of them there.
So, you'll go to two point one, which is budget amendments?
Yes.
Yes, you have in front of you three budget amendments. These are all grant funds that are available for disbursement.
Move for approval. Thank you. A motion in a second to approve the budget amendments as presented, any discussion? Those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two point two, pay bills?
Yes, invoices for today's consideration amount to one million eighty-three thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars seventy-four cents.
Move for approval, second.
A motion in a second to pay the bills as presented, any discussion? Those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Unanimous. Two point three, late bills?
Yes, the total for late bills, thirty-five thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars sixty-eight cents.
Move for approval, second. A motion in a second to approve late bills as presented, any discussion? Those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. unanimous. Two point four, auditor reports?
Yes, you received three audit, internal audit reports, these were for the justices of the peace, one, two, and three, and we ask that you accept the reports.
Move for approval, second.
A motion in a second to accept the auditor reports as presented, any discussion? Those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Unanimous. Two point five, accept monthly reports?
Yes, for January twenty twenty-three. Payroll approval, county treasurer, Tracy Sullivan, Justice of the Peace, precinct one, Miss French, precinct four, as amended, Bill Ragsdale, county clerk, Jackie J.D. Doughty, Animal Control Services Director Reagan Givens, I move for approval.
Sorry. A motion in a second to approve monthly reports as presented, any discussion? Those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. unanimous. Core orders?
We have the core orders from our February thirteenth meeting, number three nine eight oh three, three nine eight four two, they all are in order. Move for approval, second.
A motion in a second to approve core orders as presented, any discussion? Those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. unanimous. Moving on to the information agenda, three point one, statutory enforcement department heads. Givens.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to give you all a quick update, I'm sure you're all aware of the tanker gasoline spill on the interstate, which actually was in Gillespie County, I'm sure you're all aware that there's a portion of I-ten that runs through a corner of Gillespie County out there. I went ahead and went there after it happened, just to make sure things were getting reported properly to TCQ, those types of entities, UGRA, just because I don't know what Gillespie County does as far as that goes, and where it is, it affects Kerr County being, being in that location. So it was reported to TCQ, there was a San Antonio Fire Department hazmat team that came out, there, the spill was significant, I, I heard maybe close to four thousand gallons of, of fuel right there, could be wrong about that, it's exactly how much, I don't know. But hazmat team did come out, TCQ was notified, and also UGRA, so they could decide whether they needed to take any sort of action with water sampling and things of that nature. The reason I'm telling you guys. The reason I'm telling you guys is because we've started to get some phone calls from concerned residents and stuff. So if you get any calls, we're still looking at it. I'm going to, I'm sending one of the guys back out there just to look, just because we did contact TCQ. Um, that way we can just follow up with them, let them know how it's looking now, make sure they have that info. But in the end, you know, this stuff really will be going to Gillespie County. It's just where it's at, it affects, uh, some of our creeks and stuff like that possibly. So, just a heads up.
Thanks very much.
I can't comment on that. I'll comment on it by myself.
Any other department head reports? The late official reports? Liaison commissioner reports?
Yeah, when this, um, that topic, so what, those who do by approach were probably have seen just a mountain of digging and dirt at the, uh, entrance to Hidden Springs. That was a overturned fuel truck is what all that digging is. So I would anticipate there's going to be a huge amount of digging, uh, out there likely, which may impact traffic flow out there. I don't know if that's going to be the case, but I finally asked the developer in Pintry and said, what are y'all doing? And they said, no, it's a fuel truck overturned. Some of the things in the back of Pierce maybe they've gone through three or three layers of solid rock going down. And, uh, but they still have that dirt bottom, that's what that is. Uh, other comment is that I had, uh, met for the last meeting KPA or a number of firm KPA on the animal control facility. And they got to have some paperwork they gave me. I've also met with Peter Lewis, um, and, um, he is, it's more than, I met, told at the last meeting that I met with Peter and I met with the city of Hurville about various things. And now they have a contract, he was going to, um, hire an engineering firm, we might lower it, uh, to do the engineering portion of the site. Uh, but, but that whole process is working. Um, goal is to have a, uh, a design sometime in June. Of the new facility is a bit of a whole process, right at the moment. Reagan, myself, and Peter are kind of doing a lot of figuring out square footage, just trying to get an idea what's going to cost on the engineering side, seeing, you know, budget. Um, pretty, I don't know, if you don't end up designing the floor plan, that we can't afford. So we're looking, and all that is progressing. And obviously about phase four, Peter said that he saw no reason to come to court and make these, waste, waste his time money in time. So it's progressing and I'll update as things change.
Can I just inform the court and the public that since I have received a few emails from concerned citizens thinking that I might be trying to stop this project or hold it up? That is absolutely false. I can't and I don't want to. I respect the will of the people that, that voted for the, uh, animal control facility. And I only urge you to be patient and, uh, if you do have any questions, direct them to Commissioner Lex. Who is actually working on this project and not myself.
Welcome to the commissioners' court, sir. Any other liaisons on the court?
I, I wanted to say this about, uh, what Commissioner Lex was just talking about. We have the legislative session going on right now. And nobody knows but what they might have extra rules for us about animal control dealing with it. You never know. And that could change when it gets done. By the time we finish this session, it could happen.
Where, and now that I'm at, I, I'm wearing another hat organization I've worked with, track bills. And there are, probably right now, I'd say thirty to forty bills impacting that people want to do, don't impacting on control.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable, the number. I asked finally, I said, why don't we track them all these? And the reason was that people have honey dogs and they use chains, they chain them to things. And some of these rules like illegally use a chain. I mean, so it's, uh, that's why, but I was just shocked that the number of, uh, bills that are related to that. But you're very, you're quite right. It may have, you know, hopefully a lot of, uh, but we'll, we'll get past it. But we haven't had many make it out, thank you.
Okay, any other liaison reports? With that, everybody. We're going to adjourn in the executive session to, uh, take of item one point twenty-five on the agenda which we voted to take up in the executive session as well as four point three A, which is considered discussed to take appropriate action to sell property located in one fifteen Valley Blue Road, five hundred yards over. Take those issues up in the agenda. So if they comment.
And we'll come down to the end of the session and I'll call the action item, item number one. An action is made if your partner has a discussion with the board. So make a motion that we report Fisher Baloo looking into the sale of properties at 115 Valley View and 500 Grand Chero Road and report back as to the case in question may have been purchasing the property or how it might have been lost. So in a second we will discuss it. Would you say aye?